Good evening. Today is Wednesday, August 7, 2024. The Almane Union High School District Board of Trustees meeting. At this time, I'll call this meeting to order at 5:05 PM. We are on Item A, the Board of Trustees meeting, closed session, call to order, 5:05. Dr. Edward Zuniga, Superintendent of the Almane Union High School District, can you please give me a roll call?
Yes, thank you, Board President Padilla. We're going to start off with Member Carlos Sarcedo.
Here.
Member Frenchie Obriones.
Present.
Member Zalatorde Segres.
Please.
Member Qui Win.
Here.
Member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
All present today.
Thank you, Dr. Edward Zuniga. At this time, I would like to ask our legal counsel from Olivares San Madruga, Mr. Attorney Terrence Gallagher, if you could please read us into closed session.
Mr. President, the items on the published agenda for closed session Mr. President, the items on the published agenda for closed session for this evening's meeting on Section 2, Subsection A. for this evening's meeting on Section 2, Subsection A. One item under Government Code Section 549569D1, One item under Government Code Section 549569D1, existing litigation case number 22PSCV00879. existing litigation case number 22PSCV00879. Second item under the same code section, case number 24NNCV03067. Second item under the same code section, case number 24NNCV03067. Another item under the same government code section, Another item under the same government code section, potential litigation, one matter. potential litigation, one matter. Under Item D, Government Code Section 54957.6, Under Item D, Government Code Section 54957.6, labor negotiations for EMUEA and under Government Code Section 54956, labor negotiations for EMUEA and under Government Code Section 54956, I'm sorry, 54957.6, negotiations for CSEA. I'm sorry, 54957.6, negotiations for CSEA. And that is the total items for closed session this evening. And that is the total items for closed session this evening.
Terrence Gallagher from Olivares San Madruga. Terrence Gallagher from Olivares San Madruga. We are now on Item A3, Public Comments. We are now on Item A3, Public Comments. Dr. Edward Zuniga and Alma, are there any public comments this evening? Dr. Edward Zuniga and Alma, are there any public comments this evening?
There's no public comments today. There's no public comments today.
Hearing none, we'll go ahead and go into closed session, Hearing none, we'll go ahead and go into closed session, and the board will reconvene at 6:00 PM. and the board will reconvene at 6:00 PM.
Quiet yet, the board, the board meeting hasn't started, but we do want to welcome you. Uh, we just are waiting for our board president. Once he's settled in, we'll get the meeting started. But thank you again for being here. Thank you for your patience. Okay? All right. Good evening. Today is Wednesday, August 7th, 2024. Welcome to the Almani Union High School District Board of Trustees regular meeting. I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:05 PM. The board just came out of closed session. If you're following along on the agenda through YouTube or in person, we are an item B, open session. At this time, I would like to request a roll call from our superintendent, Dr. Edward Zuniga.
Thank you, Board President Padilla. We're going to start off with member Carlos Tarcedo.
Present.
Member Florencio Breones.
Present.
Member Estela Torres De Seigres.
Present.
Member Qui Win.
Here.
Member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Dr. Edward Zuniga. Um, at this time, I would like to move on to item B two. If you could please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Just a reminder to all my colleagues to please make sure that your microphone is on so that people that are watching on online or on YouTube can hear you clearly. Um, we are in item three. Uh, item three is Board President Ricardo Padilla and a poem. For those of you guys that watch our, our school board meetings regularly know that um, I have modeled my presidency after my colleague, Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. Professor Stella Torres de Seigres is uh, one of the seasoned board members here uh, on our dais. Uh, she has the most life experience. She has the most academic degrees and uh, um, I, anytime that she speaks, I listen. Um, I know that her life smarts outweigh all the academic degrees that I have and even the degrees that she has. Uh, life experience uh, is uh, more powerful to me than, than college degrees. And so uh, this was something that she would always do, either read a poem or a positive statement. Uh, and I liked the way she would always start off the, the school board meetings. And so in your honor, Professor Stella Torres de Seigres, I will uh, give our poem from today, for today. And it goes as follows. As summer's warmth gives way to autumn's breeze, a new year unfolds with promise to seize. New beginnings, learnings, goals and friends. No ideas to explore and growth that never ends. To teachers, parents, students and admin too, I wish a year filled with joy, success and all things new. Let's prioritize mental health, a vital part for students and staff, a supportive heart. Regular attendance is key. Let's strive for the best. Ninety-eight percent or higher, we must pass the test. Our math initiative, making A-plus adjustments to history will propel us forward a bright future to see. Safety and security, a top priority for all on campus, a haven to be. Every voice matters. Every voice counts. Students, parents, let your voices resound. Welcome Andrea Pablo, our new student trustee from South Almani High where eagles soar with glee. She'll represent the student body with passion and might, a voice for all shining bright with delight. To our staff, remember to care for your own. Mental health matters so you can be your best tone. Committed, collaborative, caring and exemplary too. When you thrive, our students will flourish anew. We believe in diversity, equity and inclusion, a district where every student can learn and succeed with conviction. So let's feel energized, motivated and ready to shine. Together we'll make this year a year divine. With Andrea leading the way and our staff by our side, we'll make this year a year where every student can glide. To success, to growth, to learning and to fun. In our Almani Union High School District, everyone's number one. That's our poem for today. Um, at this time, uh, I move on to item B as envoy. B four, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for today, Wednesday, August 7th, 2024? I got a motion to approve uh, today's agenda by board member, uh, Mr. Qui Win. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a second by Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. All in favor say aye.
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 The agenda for today, Wednesday, August 7th, 2024 is approved. Moving on to item B five. Consider approval of Board of Trustees meeting minutes for June 12th, 2024, regular meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
I got a motion to approve by board member Qui Win. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a second by board member Florencio Breones. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item number six, B six, consider approval of Board of Trustees meeting minutes for June 26th, 2024. This was our special board meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Florencio Breones, board member Florencio Breones. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a second by board member Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The minutes are approved for June 26th, 2024. Uh, at this time, we will move on to item B seven. This is public comments and I've just been handed some public comments. Um, I'd like to call uh, Mr. Charles Lyons. He's a coach at Rosemead High School on safety issues and district gyms. Welcome, Mr. Lyons.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Example, the Rosemead High chair works so hard year round and uh, always represents our school very well. So why I'm here is something that affects, hopefully not, but could affect all our district schools. At Rosemead High, at the end of the basketball courts, the padding is so old when you run into it, it leaves a dent before it finally comes out. It's dangerous. Fortunately, no one's gotten seriously hurt, but it's, it's a, it's a danger. It's a safety issue. The ballpark just got their, they built a new gym. Of course, we're still waiting for ours. Um, and they put four-inch foam padding all the way across the ends of the court. So that way the PE children, children, high school students from PE, volleyball, basketball, whatever's going on in there are safely protected. Also, uh, I don't know about the other gyms, but at Rosemead, there's some old microphone jacks about a couple of feet from the floor, sticking out from the wall. The whole junction box is out there. If a PE student or some, or a player hits their head on that or something, they could seriously get hurt. I know we're spending millions on our gyms, our stadiums, but uh, please, please have someone evaluate those and take a look at them. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Lyons, before you go, you know, legally I cannot respond to your concerns or to your comments because I'm, I'm, I can't do it because legally I can't. But I do welcome you to leave your phone number with, with Alma. And uh, that will get reported to Dr. Edward Zuniga. And then we do have a new, uh, Dr. Michael Lynn, everybody. He is our new, this is his first official meeting here on the board. He's our chief, uh, business officer. Or let me rephrase that. He is the assistant superintendent of,
Business service.
Business services. And uh, somebody will look into that. Okay? So if you could give your information to her.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your public comment. Um, next, Next, we have, yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's important for students that are here and for the public to know. I know sometimes when people come here and they share their public comment, you're probably wondering, well, how come the board's not responding? They're just sitting there, you know, they just look at them and don't say anything. Legally, we cannot respond. We will get ourselves in trouble. But what I can do is direct them so that it gets channeled through the proper, it gets funneled through the proper channels, okay? So next, I'd like to call Mr. Hector Delgado, the Honorable Hector, Mr. Delgado, Councilman from the City of South Del Monte. And he's also a Student Support Coordinator at South Almani High School. Welcome, Mr. Delgado, come on forward.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla.
You're welcome.
Honorable Members of the Board, Dr. Lynn, welcome. I've met and also I had a chance to meet Dr., he said, Dr. Cuco. So I want to say hello and welcome them. In the past 21 years that I've had the honor of serving our community in the City of South Almani, this is the first time that I've spoken with respects to the lack of services at our high school. And this is no disrespect to our board, our staff, but it's an issue that you just mentioned earlier. It's an issue of inclusion and it's an issue of equity for our students at South Almani High School. For the past year, our campus has been completely upturned with the construction going on. Approximately $21 million investment was made by the state for modernization. I implore you, I want you to come to visit our campus and see how this modernization has taken place with respects to the lack of project management. I've been fortunate now, with the past 21 years, we've seen over $100 million in development in the City of South Almani. And I will tell you, project management is what is needed here on this campus. With that said, as one of our students, I want to congratulate our students also, Andrea Pablo. She will tell you. And I want you to ask the questions of our students, of our parents, of our staff and see how things have been turned upside down. And again, I invite you to come. And I'm just going to name a number of things that have, need to be addressed completely with the gym area. There's no AC in there. Our wrestling mat, one of our wrestling mats was ruined. $15,000 mat was ruined by some of the workers that were there. We're currently working, I'm working with our administration on trying to get that issue resolved. Locker rooms. How are 30-year locker rooms and 30-year bathrooms, 30-year-old wood bleachers? How is that considered, not considered for modernization? Our student restrooms in the quad area? How are toilets not considered for modernization? With a number of different things ongoing also in our staff restrooms as well. How are 30-year-old toilets? Where's the equity in that? So I invite you, please come by. Visit and see the work that's being done, actually the work that is not being done. It's a complete breakdown in communication between the project management and staff. We walk in and things are just turned upside down completely. Students will be back here shortly. And I understand that our D building area will not be prepared and that's for all our science teachers, that area will not be prepared for them. So we're going to have a lot of angry teachers when we get back. So I invite you, please come and speak with our students, our parents, our staff, our classified staff, our certificated staff and get input from them. Thank you.
So much, Honorable Hector, Mr. Hector Delgado, Councilman from South Almani. Also a resident of South Almani and the Student Support Coordinator at South Almani High School. Thank you, sir. If we could pass those back to Dr. Edward Zuniga. Are there any other public comments or was it just two?
No other public comments.
No other public comment. Thank you, Dr. Edward Zuniga, Superintendent. At this time, we're going to move on to something that is, it's very exciting for every single board member up here. We are on Item B8. This is the swearing in of student board member for the 2024-2025. And so we're going to go ahead and do that. Dr. Zuniga, do, do you want the whole board to go down? How would you like to do?
Yeah, I think we could do it in the front. We have two microphones.
Okay.
There's one over here, there's one over there. So as you, as you make your way over there, we'll have also Andrea make, meet you in the middle.
Yeah.
And just to provide you some background for the public, the board, a few years back, I think you might be like the, probably the seventh or eighth at least student board member of the Almani Union High School District. And that's important because that, when that was established by the board, there was no student up here a decade ago, for example, or beyond that. It was five elected officials and there was no student representative. It was important for the board, when the law passed to establish a student board member, to also adopt that in our district. So this young lady serves not only as a student in the Del Monte Union High School District, but also the elected student onto the board as a student board member. And when I say elected, that there's representation from all schools that are part of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. There's a total of 22, I believe. One for each grade level of each school and also two at Fresnela Desma High School. So they have the responsibility to vote on an annual basis, the actual student board member, who also is a Student Advisory Council President. So there's a lot of responsibility on our student here who sits on the dais with the board, but also very rewarding because she's the voice of students. She's the voice of not only the voice of her school, but her obligation is to support all of the schools in the district. And she does that when she meets with the student leaders monthly as well. So that is a little bit about background, about why we're doing this. Because it is a, it's an official role here on the dais through education code. We do swear in the student board members, just like we do when our, our student are actually board members that are elected by the public, come and gets sworn in if they're reelected or elected into the Board of Education too, okay?
And correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Edward Zuniga, I want to add something. This board also wanted to make sure that we compensated our student trustee for their time. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely.
Because for many years, until the law went through, the, the student trustees would serve, you know, for free, but now they, they get a little compensation.
The education code provides now that, just like the Board of Trustees members get compensated and there's a formula how they get compensated. You may think that these folks, they act regular, they have regular jobs, by the way, and then they're here serving their obligation, their duty as elected officials. But it's what we call a stipend, it's a small stipend. When I say small, I'm thinking about, remind me about what, what your, what your, there are two levels, so.
$260 a month?
We're talking about between $200 and $300 a month, okay? Again, it's a stipend. Now that the law has passed, a student board member is allowed to have that stipend too for her time for having to be here after she has a full day of school, just like some board members work the full day and then they have to be here as well. Sometimes four or five hours too. So we're very excited and happy that the state adopted that so that she also has the same rights and privileges as the Board of Trustees too, in that stipend.
And we realize that it's a very small amount of money, but something is better than, than nothing. And the reason that I say that, and I'm glad that we're talking about how much trustees make, because some people think, some people have actually stood here on the, on the microphone like, you're stealing our children's money, you guys make bank, you guys drive all these fancy cars. I'm a seasoned board member, I've been here close to 10 years. And so probably Mr. Salcedo and I are the seasoned board members according to the years of service. I make $321.63. I just signed my, my time card that I give to Alma. And then Mr. Briones just shared, you know, he's been here a little bit less, so he gets $261. But just so that you guys get a sense of how much money we make, so all of us that are sitting here, we definitely do not do it for the money. We do it for you, our students, because we want to have a saying, what happens in public education? And so if you ever hear anybody saying like, oh, those board members in Almani Union High School District, they make like $5,000 and $10,000, you tell them that Mr. Padilla, the Board President, the most seasoned person on the board makes $321.63, okay?
I say.
You promise to tell anybody who sparks up any lies in our district? Is that a yes or a no? All right, all right. Can you pass that time card back over there? So at this time, I'll go ahead and ask the entire board to come down at the bottom and then Andrea.
We can make our way down there.
Come on down, guys.
And just a little bit of background as they make their way down there. Andrea Pablo is a student at South Almani High School. She is a 12th grader, or she's going to go into 12th grade, her final year of high school with us. And she's been part of our Student Advisory Council as a member, representing her school, South Almani High School, for the last, what, three years now? Will be year four now, also two. And just a little bit about her, so we're excited to bring her on board.
Did you guys give her a copy of this or no?
Yes, she does, yeah.
Go ahead and bring it.
I also want to acknowledge our outgoing student board member who is here with us, Sofia Hernandez.
Yeah. Yes. And then I'm going to go really slow because she's our student, but even when we get sworn in, we sometimes screw it up. So I'm going to go really slow, okay? So don't worry about it. Mr. Padilla is an English language learner, so I will go, I will go slow. So please put your right hand like this, okay? And then repeat after me, say aye. State your name, oh, let's back up, I forgot your mic. Please say aye.
Aye.
Say your name.
Andrea Pablo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
To serve.
To serve.
On the Almani Union High School District.
On the Almani Union High School District.
Board of Trustees.
Board of Trustees.
As a student board member.
As a student board member.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I.
And that I.
Will well.
Will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Upon.
Upon.
Which I'm about to enter. Which I am about to enter. You are now duly installed for this present term. Congratulations, Andrea Pablo. Should we get a picture with the entire board and then? Her? Yes.
Oh, hi, I'm Andrea. I'm a, I'm going to be a senior at South Almani. I, I honestly, I started off freshman year like not knowing anything about like the depth of like school and what honesty goes on here. I honestly thought it was just like, oh, they just have files here, you know? And then I, I joined ASB and I was like, okay, this is pretty cool. And then our ASB teacher told us about SAC, which is the Student Advisory Canto. And I joined that and I loved it, I fell in love with it so much. And I was like, that's going to be me one day. I'm going to be right there on that board, like Siglali, Ruben and Sofia. Honestly, great, like they're amazing. I want to thank my parents for supporting me. I know that I drive them crazy, going to, to meetings, going here, going there, there. But they support me and I, and I love you. Los quiero mucho a mis papás.
Are they here?
Yes, they are, they're in the back.
Presentanos los.
Oh, mom, dad.
Come on up here, pasen para acá, come on up. Come on up.
And my siblings too, thank you.
Oh, and the siblings también, los hermanos, las hermanas. Everybody, come on up. Family affair up here, that's right. Perfect, come on up.
My siblings speak English, my parents Spanish.
Introduce them to us, who's who?
Okay, well, this is, this is Richard, he's, he's the one closest to my age. We're, we're really close together.
What grade is he in?
He is a junior in college, I believe.
Right on.
Giovanni, he is, he's, he's in grad school, right? If I'm not mistaken, yes. And this is, this is my beautiful mother, Margarita, ¿te amamos? This is, this is my superhero, my dad, my father, Andres Pablo.
Awesome, awesome. I'm going to ask you something, Andrea. Le voy a preguntar algo, Andrea. I remember you told a story, when you, when we were with the Student Advisory Council, cuando estamos con el Concilio Escolar, you told a story that you used to listen to the radio.
Yes.
I don't know if this was in Mexico and you guys would listen here, you would listen to somebody? You remember that story?
Yes.
You and your father?
De la niña chiquita que habla en Nahuac. Y representa esa comunidad. No, bueno, cuando estaba corriendo por el puesto, expliqué que ese video y ustedes fueron una inspiración muy grande para mí. Like me tocaron, oh, wait. Like me hicieron sentir like, wow, si esa niña lo puede hacer, entonces yo también. Y muchas gracias a usted.
Good, very good. Can you say that in English? Can you say that in English so the people that speak English can understand?
So my dad, growing up, he, he loves politics. Like you'll always see him watching YouTube, watching his politics. And there is this little girl that he would always show me, speaking this dialect in front of this like board of, of important people, I am presuming. And I'll, and he would always be like, look how traditional she stays. She knows what she wants. She's doing it for herself, for her community. And that just, that really touched my heart because I, I believed like, wow, if, if this little girl could do it too, then so can I. Like I could, I could be that voice for my community, especially for students, you know? Like we're so scared to go up to teachers and be like, oh, can I have this, that? But, but I think it's just a matter of us taking that risk, you know? Like we have to speak up for ourselves at times, so, yeah.
That's fabulous. Thank you, thank you. Voy a dejar que mis colegas digan unas cuantas palabras. I'm going to allow my colleagues to share a few words and then, and then I'll wait for the end.
I'm just going to keep it really brief. Welcome aboard. I'm so excited to have you here with us today. We've been very fortunate that, at least for me personally, as long as I've been on, on, on the dais since 2017, we've had amazing student trustees. And I think each one of you brings something very special to the dais, not only your own personal experience, but also your own style. And I'm excited to have you with us today, Andrea. Congratulations on being sworn in.
Thank you so much.
As, as our student trustee. One of the initiatives that, one of your predecessors had brought to us was an initiative to expand the student trustee position so that there would be two representatives, so you'd have a senior member and a junior member. Because you're sworn in in the middle of the year. And by the time you get your, your student trustee training at our, a school board conference in December, you're halfway through your term. So it's something that I want to continue to bring up and have a dialogue with you and the rest of the colleagues on the board, about expanding that position so that somebody will be able to join you on the dais and they will have additional experience. And more importantly, that students will have an additional voice on the board here at Almani Union. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Like Mr. Briones said, we've been very blessed to have wonderful student representatives that do a wonderful job of, of listening to their peers and representing them at the highest levels at our board meeting. We're 30 minutes in and I'm already inspired. So I, I think we're off to, to a great start and I look forward to seeing all the great things that you, that you bring to this board. So welcome.
Thank you.
Andrea, thank you very much for accepting this position. It's hard. And I bet you that it took time for you to think about. Hard work, because remember, always our students are first, okay? And you have to listen to all of them, you have to be nice and kind. Sometimes even when you are a manager, try to be nice and kind. And when you need help from any of us, we are open to help you. Or from Sofia, you can, you can phone her, ask her, because she's really good. And we are open to you. And welcome to our board. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
First of all, muchisimas gracias a los, a los padres. Which, thank you very much for, you know, joining us. And you know that student voice is so important. And you can bring a lot of changes to our school system by, you know, express your concern and you're representative of five comprehensive high school. And I myself, you know, will make the best effort to attend all your Student Advisory Council meetings so I can listen to your voice and, you know, we can... so I can listen to your voice, and, you know, we can, together, we can move forward and make our school district better. And thank you very much, and thank you to the parents and your family for sharing, you know, wonderful student with us. Thank you again.
Thank you. Congratulations to your parents and to your family. Felicidades a los padres y a los hermanos. You know, such a beautiful family. You're all have moved on to higher ed. You know, your brothers have gone on to higher ed. Es muy importante que los, los, uh, hijos vayan al colegio, especialmente como inmigrantes. It's important to tell your story. You know, many of us that sit on the DIA here are immigrants. And the reason that many of our immigrant parents come to this nation is for a better life and for a better education. Muchos de nuestros padres cuando vienen a nuestro país vienen como inmigrantes y dejan a su país de natal o su país de origen para venir aquí, para sacrificar todo por sus hijos. Many parents come here and they sacrifice their native country and everything that they know to come here for their children. That's how much parents love us, to, to have a better life. I've had a better life as an immigrant from Mexico. Uh, Mr. Qui Wu has had a better life as an immigrant that came here at fifteen from Vietnam. Professor Stela Torres de Seiguris is also an immigrant. And then we have, uh, children that were born here, but their parents were immigrants at one point and understand that story. And we just got back from the Unity Conference with the California Latino School Board Association, and they shared with us that it's important to tell those stories because there is somebody out there in the audience that can relate to these stories or to their stories. Acabamos de regresar de la conferencia para miembros de la Mesa Directiva Latinos y nos dijeron es importante contar tu historia porque puede estar un estudiante aquí que puede relacionarse con esta historia de que uno dice. Me encantó escuchar esa, esa niñita que escuchaban en el radio usted y su hija, y eso la motivó a su niña. I love hearing, um, uh, the story of, uh, a dad and daughter listening to this little story about a girl who spoke, uh, uh, ¿qué era? Nahuatl, ¿cuál era el idioma?
Nahuac.
Nahuatl, yeah. Nahuac. And, uh, and he basically told his daughter, like, look, man, if she could do it, you could do it too. And look at her, she's right here. And ¿cuántos años tenías cuando eso pasó? How old were you when you watched that?
Unos ocho, nueve.
Okay, eight years old, and that inspired her, and she told that story now that she's, you know, seventeen, sixteen, in high school. So, that really stuck with me, you know? I, I, I thought about it over the summer, and I remembered it right now. So, congratulations to you. I have no doubt that you will do an exemplary job. Felicidades a ella todos, y yo no tengo ninguna deuda de que va a ser un trabajo tremendo acá. So, gracias por prestarnosla por un tiempo, porque in, in, pronto pasa el tiempo, soon time will go by, and she will be off to, to college, just like Sofia Hernandez over there. So, uh, again, another round of applause for our new student trustee, Ms. Pablo. So good. Thank you. Gracias a todos, okay? Vamos a tomar una foto.
Sure. We always take the picture with family, um, and that's the picture we can publish anywhere on our district website. The law is here to say, board, get out, or get in. The picture with the board cannot be published on our district website. You will get fined. It is against the law for them to put pictures of the board. Advertise for the board. We can't use the public's money, the district money, QMO, to advertise for ourselves. So that's why we're taking one with the family by themselves, and this you will see in the newspaper, but you'll never see us there. Anyone, you want to show me?
I guess we have, uh, a picture.
Is it here?
Yes. One, two, three.
For example? Yeah, the album? Here you go. Hand it up. Here goes, Sofia. Come on over here. And Andrea Pablo has sent a lot of requests, and she wants all the sending and the micros. She loves you too, so, she's spoken. Come on, Pat.
Yeah, so one of the things I was saying when I was talking over there without the mic is that, uh, sometimes we ask the board to take pictures with whoever we're recognizing, but then we say, board, please step off to the side. And that's because that's a legal issue. Uh, whenever we post an article on the website, uh, anything having to do with the district where we use district money, you cannot advertise for any board member. So you will never see board members, uh, coming out in, in pictures. Very rarely do we do that because we can get fined by the State of California. That's why we can only, uh, publish the pictures with the principals, with the students, and, or the people that we're recognizing. So that's kinda what I said when I was over to the site. Um, next, we're gonna move right along, and we're gonna be, uh, we just did B8, now we're gonna move on to B9. Recognition of Rosemead High School Administration, Staff, and Students for the Vicky Carr Performing Arts Center Dedication. And I would like to, uh, have Dr. Zuniga talk a little bit about, uh, about this event, and then we'll, we'll call the staff to come on up here.
Yes, thank you, Board President Padilla. Uh, it is my pleasure to have this moment to recognize our students, our staff, who assisted in making this wonderful event happen. And a lot of you are familiar because you were there. But those of you who are not, there last Wednesday, uh, the board made history. Uh, the Board of Trustees approved unanimously back in, I believe it was in January, to change the name of the High School Auditorium at Rosemead High School, which is just the Rosemead High School Auditorium, to the Vicky Carr Performing Arts Center. And this was a momentous event for all of us because, uh, Vicky Carr was present. And if, how many people know who Vicky Carr is? Just raise your hand, just to have heard the name. And those of you guys who were there probably already know who she is, right? Uh, Vicky Carr is an alumna of Rosemead High School. Now, we're talking about many decades ago, uh, because she has, she's had a career in singing for over four decades. I mean, over forty years of having this career, and she continues to have that career. So we're going on fifty years of actually, of her career. Um, the intention of this was to ensure that her as a minority at the time, attending Rosemead High School, a female and also a Hispanic Latina who family was actually coming from El Paso, Texas, to move into Sangoa Valley at the time, uh, where she settled into Rose, the community, Rosemead Community, and she attended Rosemead High School for four years at that time. Uh, she had some talent at a young age. I believe since the age of four, she started singing. Uh, she came from a very strict, uh, parent, uh, very strict parents, including her father, who not only was her mentor, but also challenged her to become who she is now. I, is a famous singer known to many around the world. But what's important to us is that we wanted to make sure that, uh, the, the message was that anyone who comes from Rosemead High School, anyone who looks like us, anyone who has battled, uh, the challenges of society and has made it, and has, uh, had received fame and stardom because their hard work and dedication, uh, is deserving of this, but also remind us that we and you can also do this too, anywhere. So it's a reflection of what our current, current community is right now, and we believe that it'll continue for many generations to come of having that name change to the Vicky Carr, right, Performing Arts Center too. So, very exciting moment, and, uh, we were lucky to have her come. I mean, she is over eighty years old, I understand that too. Uh, she still, she still has that energy, if you didn't see her, uh, that day. But she comes with a lot of energy, a lot of enthusiasm, emotion too. Uh, and we're just grateful for, that we were able to bring her on board too. Uh, but, what, the reason why we're here today is because our dedicated students and staff made this happen. Without them, we would just have a building and the name of it too. They brought not only the spirit, they brought the color, they brought the enthusiasm, they, we brought the noise, the performing arts, which are choir students coming in. They brought leadership with our ASB students coming in as well. And also demonstrated what our mentors, our advisors, our coaches, and our teachers also produce too, which we also have our two advisors here that led our cheer team and our choir team too. One is a teacher, the other one is also an advisor and a coach of our cheer team too. Uh, not only that, I also want to make sure that our principal is mentioned as well because she also has a school to open at the same time. She took on the responsibility of helping me coordinate this event to utilize some of the talent from Rosemead High School to make sure that we had a spirited, wonderful welcome to our alumna, Vicky Carr. So that's a little bit about the event, and the board wanted to be sure that you as a community of Rosemead were recognized for the contribution for this wonderful event too. And that's why we are very grateful that you have made it here today. During the summertime, very before school starts, and also our wonderful parents too that were there. Some of them were there to support their children in the event as well. Uh, so thank you for being here too. So I'm gonna hand it over to our Board President.
Absolutely, well said. You know, Rosemead High School, and I'm a little bit biased because I'm class of nineteen ninety-one, you know, go Panthers. And, uh, Rosemead High School is a gold-ribbon school in the Almani Union High School District. Not only does Rosemead High School excel in academics, but also in the performing arts. Uh, in, in all of the, all of the things that Rosemead do, the students and the staff there are phenomenal. So, I'm really excited that we were able to name, uh, the Rosemead High School Auditorium after such an amazing lady, the Vicky, Vicky Carr Performing Arts Center. And, you know, she experienced success through hard work and having great attendance at Rosemead High School, as well as her family. But she did it in a time where, you know, words like DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, were not popular. She did it, you know, beating the odds and being resilient and fighting through all those doors that she had to, you know, break through and all those, the glass ceilings that she had to shatter because it was tough to succeed during those times, you know? Not just being a Latina, but also being a woman, and, uh, just so many barriers. And for her to have done it during that time, that's why this board voted unanimously to honor her. And I have to tell you, she is a feisty lady. She is so positive, she is so energetic. There was times where Dr. Edward Zuniga was like, uh, giving her background, and, and she kinda corrected that, corrected him about three times, and Dr. Zuniga, every time she would kinda correct him, it would throw Dr. Zuniga off on his speech. And, uh, she kept, uh, he, he referred to them as the Carr family, and she says, it's not Carr, it is Cardona. You know, well, you have to remember that back then, probably somebody told Vicky Carr, like, hey, if you're Vicky Cardona, that's a Latino name, like, you're not gonna go very far here in the United States. So, Vicky Carr was her performing arts, uh, name that, that they came up with, that worked, and, uh, and, and she succeeded. But, uh, it, it, it gave, gives me great pride. Anytime that I come back to Rosemead High School, I had some of the best time that I was there, when I was there as a student. Uh, it was great in sports back then, it was great in academics back then, it was great in the arts and stuff, and I'm glad that they're still excelling, uh, you know, at that level. So, uh, that is phenomenal, and at this time, I would like to call the, the administration from Rosemead High School to come on up here, the Rosemead High School students to come on up here. Or, or I'll go ahead and call you, I guess that's, yeah. Janine Salanitro, the awesome principal from Rosemead High School. It takes great leadership to pull anything off, and I am so, uh, so grateful and thankful, as, as our board is, to, uh, Ms. Salanitro for, you know, like Dr. Zuniga said, she's gotta open school, but then we still had this big performance and this big dedication, you know, that I'm sure was hanging over you. But everything was beautiful, everything turned out great. So, the certificate of recognition is presented to Ms. Janine Salanitro for your support and contribution to the Rosemead High School Vicky Carr Performing Arts Center Dedication Ceremony. Your participation was instrumental in making the event a success and truly memorable. We appreciate your time, Ms. Salanitro, and your effort in helping us celebrate this momentous occasion. Congratulations from the Almani Union High School District Board of Trustees. You make us very proud. Okay, the next person I'd like to recognize is Mr. Zhou Wu. Also, thanking Mr. Zhou Wu for his support and contribution to, uh, the naming of the Vicky Carr Performing Arts Center. He was unable to be here this evening, but his boss, right here next to me, will make sure that Mr. Joseph Wu gets his certificate of recognition. Round of applause for Mr. Joseph Wu. Okay? I'm gonna let my, my colleagues here, I'd like to share, this is, uh, the...
That, those cheerleaders did a wonderful job. And of course, it couldn't be beautiful without a great, great, great leader. And this is Ms. Rosa Gonzalez. You gave us life. Thank you so much, Rosa.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we're gonna go ahead and call the cheer team, the ones that were making all the awesome noise, and, uh, Vicky Carr just loved it. I know she got into it when you guys were cheering, so, here you go, Professor Stela Torres de Seiguris.
I'm going to start with Sofia Orozco.
Great job, thank you very much.
Really quick, I'm gonna interrupt. And we're also, everybody's gonna be getting a special lapel pin. This is the very special pin that we give to all students that we recognize, uh, students or adults. Uh, this is a very special pin, uh, that's very close and dear to our heart. Uh, anytime that we recognize anybody here, we always make sure that you get one. So please, you know, take care of it and, uh, love it a lot. We love it a lot. I, I apologize.
Belén Olo Placencia. Thank you, Belén. Congratulations. Jade Ramírez. Thank you so much. You did life, okay? Thank you so much. Kimberly Ramírez. Thank you very much, Kimberly, you did a great job. And Leyana Rios.
Next one is Justin Loera. Vanessa Benítez. Arabella Cabonte Ayala. Helen Serna. Anissa Diaz. Congratulations. Catherine Lee. Lila Delgado. Mina Do. Adriana García. Arisbeth Jacinto.
Miranda Manjares.
Miranda Manjares. Jaleen Martinez. Elena Mendoza. Dixie Montana. Trinity Munoz.
And last, but definitely not least, we have a couple more cheerleaders here. Sarah Rios. Get a pin for her, too. Valeria Salinas. Allison Saravia. Marissa Serampongi Ponkey. How do I say it? Serapongi. Lillian Urquidi. Nika Valenzuela. Okay, and this is for our ASB president, Alice Sar. Next, we're gonna do choir, beginning with, uh, with our teacher, and again, I'll have my colleagues help me.
For me, it's a great honor to give this certificate to one of the most beautiful teachers that we have in our El Monte Union High School District. I've known her for a long time and always make us feel very proud. Ruth Gray.
Thank you so much, Ruth, for being so wonderful. Thank you very much. Oh, yes, she was our Teacher of the Year. And now, we have our singers, and I have here Maggie Lim.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Maggie.
Next, I have Navan Do. Next one is Alex Ka. Ben Lee. Stace Lynn.
Michelle Lim. Sabrina No.
We have a couple more choir students. Eric Tu. Kayon Van. Leanne Vo. So again, we've got Rosemead High School, a lot of Panthers up here, I feel, with my family right there at once, you know, in nineteen ninety-one, before they were born. But, uh, this just goes to show you the amazing work that Rosemead High School does, uh, with its leader, you know, Ms. Janine Salanitro as a principal, with Mr. Joseph Wu, with our choir instructor, with all of our students here. Rosemead Panther always comes with it, with the arts and with academics, and it's for that reason that they are a gold-ribbon school. And Ms. Vicky Carr got to see all of them in action, with their beautiful voices, with some solos, with some beautiful cheers here that Ms. Vicky Carr got into it. So, I am extremely proud as alumni and as president of the Board of Education for my Rosemead Panthers here. They do some amazing things. And Dr. Zuniga, I would like to encourage you to put an article in our newspaper, maybe with a little bit of the reel of the, of the, uh, naming of Ms. Vicky Carr, so that the public who cannot be here at our board meeting can see, you know, uh, what we do. So, again, another round of applause for the Rosemead High School Panthers. Yes. Great, so do you want one big picture? You tell us what you want. Sure, do what you need to do. Stand up if you're a parent of a Rosemead Panther. Párense si son padres de uno de los panteras. Big round of applause to all of the parents from Rosemead High School. Thank you, thank you so much, thank you. Board, come on over here to the site, so she could arrange a little better. Your best smile, because this is gonna be on the district website in an article. Perfect, good. Maybe the board can just sit, can we put just chairs, and we'll just sit in the, we'll sit. I think it's easier, because everybody's taller than us. Okay. Does anybody see my glasses? Never mind, got them. Good. Okay, uh, Rosemead High School students, you're welcome to stay. Uh, parents, you're welcome to stay, but if you guys need to go, I know it's still summer, you know, just coming here was a big sacrifice. Again, you're welcome to stay, or you're welcome to go home. You guys are released, you've done your part. Thank you so much, okay? I'll go ahead and wait a little bit, yes. You're welcome, Panthers, great job. Okay, I'll tell them again right now. O antes. Okay? Ándale pues, que pasen buenas noches. Ándale, bye-bye, thank you so much. All right, we're gonna go ahead and continue this meeting. If you're following along, we were, we are on B, B as in boy. Uh, item ten, this is communication from union representatives of the Almani Union Educators Association. Do we have a representative from EMUEA this evening? No? Okay, hearing none, um, I'd like to call up if there's a representative from CSEA, the California School Employees Association. Is there anybody here representing CSEA this evening? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. We are on item C, C as in Charlie. This is oral and written communication. We are on C1, Board and Superintendent Announcement and Communications. At this time, um, if you look on the agenda also, Andrea, just for training, you will always be up next. You will always come on C2, and this will be your opportunity to give a, a communication as well. But at this time, I'd like to call on board member, Mr. Carlos Alcedo. Is there anything that you'd like to announce, or any communications? Please, uh, you have the floor.
Just, uh, just to share to our administrators, our classified, certificateed staff, and especially our students, uh, wishing them a very good, um, start of the, of the new school year. I know right now, it's, it's kinda crazy time, uh, being at a board meeting, getting ready for ribbon cutting, and still getting ready for the new school year. So, I appreciate all the hard work, and I have no doubt that, uh, we will have a very successful, um, school year. So, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, board member, Mr. Carlos Alcedo. And just for the record, the first day of school for the Almani Union High School District will be when? Uh, Superintendent Dr. Edwards Zuniga?
Monday, August nineteenth.
Monday, August nineteenth. Okay, August nineteenth, awesome. Okay, uh, board member, uh, Mr. Florencio Briones, are there any announcements or communications that you'd like to relay at this time?
And thank you, Mr. Padilla. First and foremost, I wanna extend a very warm welcome to the newest members of our team who are here tonight, and starting with our new Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Dr. Michael Lynn.
Yes.
Uh, as well as to Director Two of Human Resources, Dr. Refugio Cuco Gracián. Welcome to the Almani Union High School District. Uh, I had the opportunity to speak to a couple of your, a few of your former colleagues, just by coincidence, um, at a conference this weekend, and they all spoke very highly of you. Um, and I just wanted to extend that welcome to both of you. The other items that I wanted to report out today is, I had a few, I had the opportunity to attend a few meetings over the last month. On July eleventh, I attended a Metro six oh, six oh five freeway project presentation at Lambert Park, uh, where I was happy to learn that Metro is no longer considering widening any freeway as part of this project along the six oh five freeway from Downey as far north as the ten freeway, and including, um, the sixty freeway from Hacienda Heights through South Almani, uh, to San Anita Avenue. Uh, that's important for me, because as you all know, we have a high school that abuts the sixty freeway through that area, uh, and any additional widening of that freeway would impact potentially our own property, as well as induce additional demand of, uh, vehicle miles traveled. So, uh, per the presentation that was provided that, that evening, um, widening of the freeway is no longer being considered as part of that project, of either of the two freeways. Um, however, there is consideration for, um, converting one of the general-purpose lanes along the sixty freeway into a carport or an express lane uh, in order to induce, uh, demand for, uh, the HOV lane. I was very happy to attend that presentation. Next up, I was invited to speak at, at the Almani Arcadia Civitans Group on July fifteenth. Um, I was very happy to engage with them, the Civitans. If you don't know who they are, it's an international organization who primarily focuses on, uh, youth with special needs. Um, so I was invited to speak with them. I gave them an update as to what our school district is doing, uh, especially as it relates to our special needs population. It was a very nice invitation from Ms. Juanita Yeguera, who is a member of the Almani Arcadia Civitans Group. Um, it's that nice to know that they're, they're around. I received a scholarship from them many, many years ago, um, and I was happy to, to know that they're still in our community and happy to present to them. Next up, on July twenty-ninth, I had the opportunity to attend the San Gabriel Valley Civic Alliance annual elected representatives mixer at Citrus College. I want to extend a thank you to the executive director, Mr. Ed Rendon, for the invitation. Uh, it was a really nice event, and always an op, great opportunity to mix, uh, and mingle with some, uh, elected representatives from around the San Gabriel Valley. Um, and then, as we've already discussed, on the thirty-first, uh, we all attended the Rosemead High School Vicky Carr Performing Arts Center dedication. It was a really nice ceremony. I can't speak highly enough about Rosemead High School, our students, our administration, the support staff there. They put on just a wonderful program. And, um, we've already thanked them, obviously, but I just, I will, I wanna say thank you again uh, for the hard work that went into putting that program together. Thank you to Ms. Carr, who took the time out of her schedule to travel to Southern California, to Rosemead, um, to be part of our presentation. This is a project that is more than a, more than a decade in the making, and it's nice to have this project finally come to fruition. And lastly, this past weekend, along with some of my colleagues, I attended the California Latino School Board Association Unity Conference in Monterey. It's really nice to attend this, this conference, um, especially after last year's conference was, uh, was canceled due to a labor issue at the host hotel. Um, and I do wanna point out a couple of things. One, I did get a question from, uh, from a colleague from a neighboring district about attending this conference. Um, it's much smaller than the annual education conference that we attend through, through CSP every year, but it's also much more targeted. Um, a lot of the populations that we serve, our Latino population, our API population, a lot of the, the sessions, uh, at the conference are geared specifically to those individuals or to those populations. Um, and so we had some really great presentations. Um, Dr. Zuniga, Mr. Padilla, were just discussing a conversation they had regarding some dual enrollment, uh, programs in other districts, and how those have worked out. Um, getting an, receiving an update from, uh, presenters on the status of English language learners, and, um, uh, as it relates to math in California. Hearing from the Deputy Undersecretary of the Army, who was a keynote speaker at the event. Um, definitely, it was a very welcome event, and I had a wonderful time there, spending some time with my colleagues, along with Dr. Zuniga. Um, and I look forward to, to next year's unity conference, um, mostly because I was fortunate... And I look forward to next year's unity conference, mostly because I was fortunate to have won a opportunity to win, and I received a free ticket to next year's conference. So Dr. Zuniga and Mrs. Ragosa, when I send you an email next year to sign me up, remind me that we don't have to pay for it. You know, make sure that we, make sure that we do that. Because I did win that free ticket, so we don't have to pay for it. Those are the items that I have to report tonight, thank you for the opportunity. And again to Dr. Lee and to Dr. Gracián, welcome to the Elmani Union High School District.
Thank you very much, board member, Mr. Florencio Breones. At this time, are there any communications from board member, Mr. Qui Nguyen?
Yes, in the last two months of summer, there's so many activity, I cannot remember, but these are highlights. You know, first of all, I want to welcome Dr. Lynn, Dr. Refugio Gracián, to onboard to the Elmani School District. Just last year's alone, we have four doctorate degree in leadership. Dr. Laura Rivers, Dr. McGuinness, Dr. Macolin, and Dr. Gracián, Refugio Gracián. So we have a lot of leadership potential over here, so we should expect, you know, higher standard. But, you know, welcome, and you know, we have a lot of work ahead of us.
Does that mean you're going back to school to get a doctorate?
Oh, no, I'm done, it's over. But anyway, I, you know, the highlight of the summer is, you know, we all, Dr. Zuniga, Professor Estela De Segris, President Padilla, and me, we attended the parade, July 4 parade, at Rosemead. And I just want to share some of the picture that you see here, President Padilla, on his convertible, Elmani Union High School District with the flag, okay? And the next one, this is, you know, where we meet up at McDonald's with all the students. I think this is from Elmani High School. And the next one is a picture that, you know, we all, you know, parade right here. And here, Elmani High School cheer team, one of the very, very special. And, you know, we get a lot of positive feedback for these students, that how they perform, you know, on the parade. And, you know, they are wonderful students, you know, and cannot say more about them, it is perfect. And here's, you know, here's our team on the street. And here with our neighboring school district, Rosie School District, with more, John Quintanilla, Ron Esquivel, Veronica.
Peña.
Yeah.
Peña.
Peña and.
Nancy Armenta.
Armenta. So, you know, this is our neighboring, and look at this, we have Rosemead cheer team, and a Royal cheer team, look at it, how strong and how beautiful they are. And, you know, it is really showcase what our school district is all about. A lot of potential, a lot of promise, and, you know, the thing that missing is some noises. You know, next year probably, we need to have some repercussions team, drummer or whatever, but, you know, it's so beautiful. We have four schools attended the parade, Rosemead High School, Elmani High School, Mountain View High School, and South Elmani. And look at it, and this is one, you know, some of the picture, you know. And here is Elmani High School, we're so proud of them, you know, the way they carry themselves, and, you know, and the way that the announcer announced our Elmani High School, you know. I'm very moved, very, very happy. And here's another picture with Councilwoman Sandra Armenta from Rosemead. And here our Mountain View school, we've been looking for Mountain View, because I've been looking for the purple jersey, you couldn't find it. And finally, we found them, you know, with the new 2024 Olympic theme. So, you know, this is a Mountain View School District, you know, Mountain View High School. And this is, you know, the parade start, you know, we, you know, they provide a car, convertible car, so we can ride on it. And it is a beautiful event. Look at Dr. Zuniga and Professor Estela De Segris on the parade, with all, very fun. Okay. And that's it, so, you know, that for the July 4 parade. But I also, during the summer, I make summer school visit, do the classroom visit to all the site. The first one, I make the visit to Rosemead High School. I have to thank the principal, Ms. Salinietro, for accompanying me to see all the integrated Math 1, Integrate Math 2, you know, and also the Math Bridge, and also the, you know, the Prepare, the Prepare Math. And, you know, when I go to the Prepare Math for, ready for Integrate Math 1, I so surprised that when I interview those students, they all get an A, most of them get an A in middle school, in Math 8. And I'm surprised, that's why they put in the Prepare class instead of accelerated to Math Bridge. Maybe, you know, they ran out of space on the Math Bridge, and that's why they put, very important, they've been misplaced. And next school year, I would like to ask the Education Service Department to provide me how many Math Bridge, how many Summer Bridge classroom, and how many Prepared classroom, you know, provided. Because it's very important that we, I'm gonna put our kid in the right place, so they can have an acceleration path to success. And, you know, I think there's a misplacement right there. And also, I also visit Elmani and Mountain View with Dr. Zuniga. But I feel like most of the kids over there, they don't feel like they're going to summer school. I mean, and, you know, because I don't see that energy, that enthusiasm energy. And, you know, like I say, you know, and after that, when I interview them, and I ask them, you know, why, you know, you're not so upbeat about going to summer school, especially in the math class? And they say, you know, some, most of them sometimes they don't understand, they're so far behind. So no matter how much you want to prepare them, they still lost. So that's why they're losing that, you know, interest in our Math class. But on the other hand, at a Royal High School, and thank you, the principal, Gabriel Flores. And I thank you for not telling my car park in your parking space. Because there's no parking space, I parked his car, and he was looking, so I parked his parking space, and, you know, he took me to those classes, you know. One thing difference in a Royal is, when the Math Bridge, all of them are very, very solid, very, very strong in math. And I told him, these kids will be a star of your school, and you can feel it. They, when you came in there, they on task, and they very enthusiastic. On the other hand, I go to Math Preparers, and, you know, it's happened to one teacher I know for a long, long time. And I asked him, how are our student doing? And she say about 70, 80% of preparers doesn't make the grade, only about 20%. And I say, why? The same reason, that they so far behind, you know, and that's why, you know, and they show me the grade book also. And it reflects what she told me. And it's sad, it's sad, because, you know, that's why we, we need to work together with our feeder school, you know, especially Mountain View School District, Elmani School District, and Rosemead School District. Because, you know, right now at CLSBA, we don't talk about high school or middle school anymore. We talk about TK to 14. That means all of us have to work together, you know, and collaborate together. Otherwise, you know, we'll be facing a very, very difficult challenge to, you know, to make the difference in math. And, you know, when I, during the summer, I also have a meeting with Dr. Raymond Andre, and he told me that, you know, he sent all of his kid to Rio Hondo, you know, for summer, you know, to get, to learn math. And also, he have a new Assistant Superintendent in Student Services that had a good, good working relationship with our Dr. Laura Rivers, Dr. Mercedes Gomez. So hopefully, you can leverage, you know, that relationship, and, you know, make a difference in these kids. And I also had a meeting with Assistant President of PCC also, Dr. Laura Martinez Ramirez, I mean. Just right before Assistant Principal Montano from Rosemead High School, and Jo Vu had a meeting, right after that, she had a meeting with me, and she expressed the same thing. She will, she and Dr. Gomez from PCC, we have a full cooperation, we pledge the support 100% to make, you know, because, you know, PCC have such jurisdiction, all of Rosemead Elementary and few of Elmani School Elementary, like Sipser, Getley, and, you know, only four or five. The rest of Elmani City belong to Rio Hondo. So, you know, Elmani City need to work with both of them and bring forward. But the one good thing about Rosemead School District is they try to bring summer school to Rosemead Elementary next year. And, you know, that to prepare, you know, the kid before in 7th grade. So in 8th grade, they go to our school, we prepare them for high school. But 7th grade, they want to have summer school in, you know, at their school side, you know, Math Academy. Because, you know, they have, you know, PCC have full resources. They have teacher, they even willing to hire Rosemead teacher first, and it would pay more than the Rosemead Elementary School District pay. And the same thing as, you know, Rio Hondo, you know, you have a lot of resources. We need to make the best use of the resources around us, so we can help our student. Ourself, we cannot do it alone, and tell you, no matter what system we try to improve, but without those input, you know, feeder school collaboration, we're not going to, you know, we will have a rough time to make it turn around. So, you know, we have to start early, we have to start very, very early. And, you know, we have a lot of meeting, you know, and I also had meeting with fellow trustee from Rio Hondo also, and they expressed the same thing with PCC, they are on the same page. So hopefully, our school district make the best use of the relationship with community college, so we can not only for dual enrollment, but also help our elementary school district, you know, whatever the way it is, you know, so we can work together for the same goal, to improve the quality of education. And, you know, I also went to CLSBA, attending, you know, those, like my fellow board member, Beonas, very targeted, mostly Latino. I sit down in one of the session, one school district, Berry Yesa, they have, in four, in four year, they have four superintendent, replaced four superintendent. Just imagine, and that's the school district of Vizalia, 20,000 students. Four years, four superintendent, and all those superintendent are Latinos. And finally, when you know what they did? They went out of the box, they had to hire a white superintendent from the south, come in and change everything. And what's lacking, you know, what they need to have, what they core value. So the board member and, you know, and the staff have to adhere to those core member. He turned thing around, and, you know, and that's amazing. And one of the, all the board member, they said seven years, seven superintendent. And, you know, it's kind of sad, it's kind of sad, you know, because we need to agree, we need to work together in unity for the welfare and for the, you know, for the, you know, for the advancement, for the improvement to our student. And, you know, it have to be improved, it have to improve, that we have no choice. We have to move forward and improve our, the quality of our education, and very important. And last but not least, I, you know, attended Vicki Carr dedication at Rosie Auditorium. It's a perfect event, I cannot even more proud of all those students, their performance and everything is so perfect. And you can see, you know, I'm speechless, you know, I'm so proud of them. As a Rose median for 47 years in Rosemead, I can never be prouder, you know, being in Rosemead, when I see Rosemead High School performing, especially one of the singers, awesome, you know, singer, I mean, quality singer. And I really appreciate it very much, and thank you, Ms. Salinietro, and her staff, and her maintenance crew. That's the perfect event that I ever attended, thank you very much, and that's it.
Thank you, board member, Mr. Qui Nguyen. Next, I'd like to call on Professor Stella Torres De Segris, are there any communications that you have?
Yes, well, June, at the end of June, we finished with our delegates of state. I've been working with them in their preparation for the presentation that they are going to have next board meeting. They are going to bring, to show you all the things that they did and the great success that they have. As you saw, I attended the 4th of July celebration. But the most beautiful thing that I noticed on that was, first of all, give thanks to the four principals for send us the beautiful girls that they were, well, then they were boys, the cheerleaders. Oh, how enthusiastic, how happy, all of them, the four schools, really bright, they were beautiful. The parents, that was beautiful, parents were participating a lot, and they were helping the girls, bringing water, helping them, doing everything. And they were there since 7:30 in the morning. I was so surprised and so happy to see them in a hot day, a great day for many families, because it's a big celebration. We were there together. Elmonte Union High School District really, really had its name very important there. Another important thing is that during these months of July and August, we work with Bones Credit Union, and they help us to the son of our, of our clubs for helping our students. Elmonte Women's Club had a fundraiser, and we got some money for scholarships. We got also the PTA from Arroyo High School, they participate very well. I hope that we got enough money for giving scholarships. And the last one was last week, and it was the one that we had with Business and Professional Women's Club. We got enough money to give two scholarships for adult education. Now, we have the money for adult education, and it's something that really makes us feel very happy, because we are working for our students. During this month, I participated in two great celebrations. And this celebration was, were from students from, from Rosemead High School. One celebration was sad, was remembering a student, that he graduated from, from Rosemead, but for a while, he was in Fernando Ledezma. I was very, very impressed. The celebration of life of this student was done in Fernando Ledezma Auditorium. And the Assistant Principal Bernie talking in such a beautiful way, remembering the student. And if the student was from, he was in 1997, 1998, and he talked in a very nice way about that boy. And he talked to the parents of the boy who died. You know, this is very important to see that. Elmonte Union High School District is a family, and it's in the good and in the bad, in the good times and the bad times. And we are together. It was a beautiful ceremony, celebration of life. The parents of this boy who loved, who died, were very calm and very happy to hear those words that Mr. Bernie Artiaga said. He remembered him very well, he described him physically. He went back to see the yearbook to check about him, it was beautiful. And another great celebration was, was last Wednesday, the 30th, Vicki Carr, graduated from, from Rosemead High School. She was so happy to be there, and it's the celebrations that we need to have. That's, that's what is very important in the education of our students. It's not only the facts, it's also what, what we are doing, the love that we have and to be together. See, one, I attend the Unity Latino Congress that we have, and we have to try to be unit. I know that it's really hard, because everybody is different. But the most important thing is that if we want to progress and love, and make our students to grow up, the best thing is to be unit, to have love, and to help each other. That was really a great celebration that we had in these two celebrations for our students, and the Congress that we attend, and it was really good. Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla.
Thank you so much, Professor Stella Torres. Thank you so much, Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. So as you can see, all of the trustees have been, have been very busy working for the best interest of our number one customer, which is our students. For myself, in terms of my report, first of all, I would like to welcome Andrea Pablo. It was an honor and a pleasure for me to swear you in. I will always remember that. And to see your family here and to hear that story about your father and how you got motivated at the age of eight, you know, listening to the video speaking in Nahuatl, that's part of your story. And I just want to tell you how proud we are of you being here. And we have no doubt that you will bring your own touch and your own flavor to the student trustee position. And I want to congratulate you. Okay? Next, I'd like to also welcome, you know, Dr. Michael Lynn, our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. I know this is your first meeting. I just want to, oh, he's not there? Of course, I'm going to talk to him then. We'll come back to him. Also, Dr. Refuyo Cuco Gracia, the director position that we created, and the, the Director of Human Resources. Welcome to the Elmonte Union High School District and part of our family. Thank you to my colleagues, Professor Stella Torres de Seigres and to Board Member, Mr. Qui Win. It was a pleasure being a part of the Fourth of July Parade in the city of Rosemead. We got to showcase all of our high schools and especially the powerhouse team from Rosemead High School. And everybody brought their flavor to that. Congratulations also to Elmani High School for their humongous cheer team that they sent as well. I know on that day, I called the principal and I woke him up. And I just want to tell you, thank you so much for answering Board President Padilla's phone call and saying those inspiring words to your kids. That was pretty cool. I really enjoyed that. So, thank you to all the principals from all those high schools, including Mr. Flores. You know, your, your team is always, they're, they're just powerhouses in the arts and stuff. So it was cool seeing your girls there. And just a collaborative effort. And like Mr. Qui says, we just need some drums or, you know, a little bit of band or some, something there. But I know that it's very challenging because it's during the summer and the instruments are already put away. But it's something that we can work on. But congratulations to all, all high schools. Also, again, Rosemead High School on July 31st, the Vicky Carr Performing Arts Center. One thing I did want to tell you, Dr. Zuniga, is if you could print out the article for us and send it in our Friday packet, and can you reach out to that reporter? I know I read it online, but I, you know, if you could print it out. I would like to recognize that the writer of that article, if his time allows, if we can do that in our next board meeting, just thanking him for what a wonderful story he put out on our alumna, Ms. Vicky Carr. And I would like to personally, I know I saw somebody there with like a tubular camera and I kind of figured that was a reporter, but I didn't really get a chance to thank him. So if we could do that, that would be awesome. Also, on August 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, we did attend, Mr. Breones, Board Member, Mr. Qui Win, Professor Stella Torres de Seigres, and myself. We did go to CLSBA, which is the California Latino School Board Association. And it is very specialized, it's specialized around the needs of Latino kids. And specifically of the needs of English language learners. It was, the theme of the conference was unity and, and that we all must work together for our number one client, which is our students, and that it is important to tell your story. I got to hear sessions on community schools, you know, one of the grants that we will be applying for in the Elmonte Union High School District. This was in Monterey, California. I did learn about the, more about English language learners. And I know I'm going to be coming your way, Dr. Rivas. In terms of our LCAP and also EDITH, I attended a session on Californians Together and the ELD, you know, plan in California, and how they stated that we needed to have included a goal, a numerical goal in English language learners of 10% in the English language, English language learner section. So I'm going to be asking for a copy of that and to see that we did include that 10% goal that we want all of our English language learners to grow every year. Also specifically, you know, learning about best practices and best programs for students on free and reduced lunch, foster youth and homeless, dual enrollment, you know, getting college credit and high school credit. And there was some really good, new leadership in the leadership of the California Latino School Board Association Board. And it was reinvigorating. And yeah, congratulations to Board Member, Mr. Florencio Breones. They did have a casino night, which was just play money. And at the end of the, of the, that activity that they had, you were able to turn in all of your play money winnings and turn it in for something. And Mr. Breones was able to win a free registration for next year. So congratulations to him. He's a lucky, lucky winner. And yeah, remind them so we don't have to pay for that next year, okay? And also, this, this Saturday, I am excited that we are going to be having this Saturday, August 10th, 2024, we will be having our yearly board and administration retreat. This is an opportunity where we can agendize the item of the board coming together. We usually can't discuss business as board members. You can only, the law allows us for two of us to talk to each other, but not three of us. If three of us talk about anything having to do with the board or board business, we can get ourselves in, in hot water and big trouble. But because we're going to make an agenda and we're going to tell everybody that the board is coming together, we will be able to speak with our principals, vice principals, and directors this Saturday. It starts at, from 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And we are inviting Orrenda. Orrenda is a company that is going to come in and work with the board and with the administration. You want to talk a little bit about Orrenda, Superintendent Dr. Edward Zuniga? I know that we did get an opportunity to attend a session on the Executive Director of Orrenda, and she did a presentation that was phenomenal. So I can't wait to, to see her in action. But talk a little bit about Orrenda, Dr. Edward Zuniga.
Sure. Orrenda has been working with many districts throughout the state of California. You're talking about years of not only of the consultant and the actual owner of the company being not only the past educator, but also a writer, a researcher as well. And what they do is they come on, come onto the campuses, they explore opportunities to engage with the community about what, what is the systemic problem, for example, about why students are underperforming, right? So there are a lot of interviews happen at the time. There's a lot of conversation that qualitative and quantitative data is collected. So they do help to find discovery as far as information related to the school district and also provide support in any of the research-based strategies that have been proven effective to support increasing achievement of academic student achievement for school districts too. What our focus will be, generally speaking now, is that we're going to have the opportunity to focus more on high school setting and how it relates to student pathway success after high school. So we, as administrators, as educators, as teachers, we have a big, not only influence, but also are very impactful about how our students do in high school. We really pave their roadmap about what they're going to be doing after, after post-secondary plans, right? For example, which ones are going to college, which ones are going to career tech, which ones are not going to either, and the military. So the influence that we do have on each and every one of our students can impact their trajectory, what they're going to head to. And I think that's really important to emphasize about the data that we have seen about how many of our students are actually going to four-year, two-year, or even entering a career program, certification program too. The challenges that we said high schools do is we're not a unified school district. So we ask Orrenda, Orrenda, we are not a unified school district. What is your research on working with high school districts? And also the challenges that they have with having multi-k school districts too. So they have worked with Woody Union as one of our sister local districts. So they also will share that experience as well. But I'm very excited because it's more about the energy and the connectedness that we have of the consultant that it really relates to the struggles that we all have faced in, in school settings and also districts too. So college and career, post-secondary plans, the data, the equity, and really the gap between subgroups specific to our Latino population, Asian population as well, and our English learners too. So all that that you've all heard and have, really, we have been at the table with having that dialogue and looking at the data. We know our data. It's just more about, important about how, how do others see it in the lens of research and also within the scope of our own school district too. So that's a little bit about what we'll see on Saturday. We'll have about three hours of that session.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. For a minute there, you made it sound like Orrenda was like Alexa, you know, like, Orrenda, tell us about.
Orrenda.
No, thank you for sharing that. And I do look forward to that. And just like teachers get PD or professional development, or we expect our principals to, you know, stay current. And our superintendent often tells us, hey, Mr. Padilla, I'm going to be going to a conference of all superintendents. Absolutely, it is important that no educator stays stagnant. We must continue to explore, to change, to see best practices. So when all of my colleagues here reporting, they're, they are getting their professional development to find out what is the latest, the most current research. What does it say to increase the learning of English language learners? What does it say about foster youth? What does it say about increasing math test scores? We're all doing that. And Dr. Zuniga, by bringing Orrenda, and this company is doing just that, so that the leaders of this district, all the administrators, assistant supes, directors, and the board are all on the same page as we, you know, propel this district forward. I'm also excited that as part of this retreat, we will also be continuing making the A-plus adjustments to history. As you know, there is great disproportionality when it comes to the achievement of mathematic test scores in the Elmonte Union High School District between Latinos and Asian students. There is no secret about that. It is something that this board has taken on. And the teachers are helping us with CALs, with the partnership that we have with our neighboring school districts, with the, the new assessments that we have. And we're just moving forward. And I'm excited that Catalina Sines is going to be having a conversation with all admin to make sure that she's explicit and she's crystal clear about what the next steps are and what the responsibilities are of administrators moving this initiative forward with the teachers and so forth. So it's important to have a place, to have the administrators sit and, and hear it together from the horse's mouth, from Catalina Sines and the recommendation that she will be making as an outside person looking at our data. And that we embrace and lean into the discomfort. But what are we going to do to work together so that we continue to have that unity that CLSBA's theme focused on? Also, we will continue to talk about youth truth. This is our Student Advisory Council who will present. As you know, the Student Advisory Council is made up of four individuals, a senior, a junior, a sophomore, and a freshman, who will bring student voice about how they feel about certain things. And the board is very in tune to the things that they come with to determine next steps. And then also, a presentation from Chief Fisher, our Elmani Police Department. As we talk about school safety, school safety is the number one priority for the Board of Education, even before curriculum and instruction. We must ensure that our students feel safe, that our teachers feel safe, and the rest of the staff feel safe. And I, I look forward to hearing that presentation from him if we were, we were able to get him based on his busy schedule. But a lot of excitement, again, as Professor Stella Torres de Seigres, we must unite, we must come together. We don't always agree on everything, but we got to have those discussions and lean into the discomfort to move this district forward. Because at the end of the day, one thing that we do agree on is that we want students to excel, we want students to succeed. And on that, we will always be on the same page. And then one of the things that Dr. Zuniga and I have discussed along with other board members is that our district does need to identify some core values so that when we talk to other districts, that was something that we, we don't have. And it's something that we're going to work on. But I can tell you that with collaborating in this conference with colleagues, board members, and Dr. Zuniga with superintendents from, you know, Northern California, Central California, and Southern California, I can tell you that we are right on, you know, particularly when we talk about math and we hear presentations, it is something that everybody's jumping on board to try to address the math, the math issue in the state of California. And that's exciting. And not just there, but in other areas and that Dr. and I, Dr. Zuniga and I discussed, it's like, hey, man, we're doing a lot of the right things with this board. We're moving forward. And that's exciting. So that's my report as President of, of the Board of Education. At this time, I would like to turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Edward Zuniga, for any communication that he has. And then we can turn it over to Ms. Pablo.
Yeah, thank you, Board President Padilla. This is just a short communication for me today. I want to just wish all of our administrators who are here, also any of our other educators that are present are seeing a wonderful kickoff to the 24-25 school year, particularly the, the administration team, then not only the school side, but also the district who, who don't stop. I mean, we're talking about summertime, and that's the time we ask them to take time off. Yet, we're asking them, we're tasking them to do a lot to prepare for the new school year as well.
Dr. Zuniga, if I could just interrupt, I missed that point. Yes, I want to speak to you guys and I want to look at you, everybody who's here. And whoever's not here, just relay that message to them. Absolutely. You know what? Thank you so much, administrators and district people. The summer just goes by so fast. And sometimes you guys have very, very minimal, you know, downtime. Please take care of your mental health. If you're a principal, please, you know, be caring and nurturing to teachers and don't give them flack unless it's somebody who's abusing it. Okay? But people don't abuse trying to get to the doctor, trying to take one of their parents to the doctor. And Dr. Zuniga deals with that. I deal with that. There's times where I'm caught, he's like, oh, I'm taking my mother to the doctors. I'm like, oh, hang up with me, be with your mom. Boom. I want you to know that this board values mental health, not only for principals, directors, assistant supes. We ask you to do so many things, but we know that if you don't take care of self, then the people you lead will fall apart. And for our teachers also, for those teachers that are watching, take care of yourselves. If you need to do something, talk to your principals. If your principals are giving you a hard time, move it up in the chain of command and let higher ups know, hey, you know, talk to this principal and say, hey, we need you to be a little more nurturing, a little more caring. But back to you guys, you guys, please take care of yourselves. Find some time. No one knows your schedule better than you guys, you know, but you got to take some time because if you don't, you know, bad things happen. So please, as the new year is already going to begin, and, you know, once you, once you come back on, the phone starts ringing. Today was my first official day back with my day job with Elmonte City School District. And, you know, last night was, was hard. I'm like, oh, man, I got to go back, you know? I'm human too. Whether I'm president, I'm a 30-year educator. I know you, you felt the same way too. So take care of yourselves, please. Cuco, I know you're new, take care of yourself. Dr. Lynn, while you were away, I did welcome you to our school district, you know. But again, even in these positions, please, Robin, Dr. Rivas, our student trustee, you know, everyone's going to be like, hey, you're the new person. Let me tell you. And they're going to give you an earful. But find time for yourself, whatever that is, playing basketball, talking to your counselor, your therapist, whatever, you know what you need to do. Pull out that poem that I gave you of different things that you can do of taking care of yourself. But I did not want to, I had so many things to report that I forgot that thing, which is the most important. Take care of yourselves, please, please, please. Did everybody hear me? Yes, I know if you're on your phone, that's okay. But as long as you hear my message to, please take care of yourselves. Okay? I really truly mean that. If Dr. Zuniga is giving you a hard time at the district and they're not letting you go, you call one of us board members and we'll fix that real quick. Now, Dr. Zuniga understands, he really does. So I apologize, Dr. Zuniga.
No, thank you for sharing that.
And that goes for you too, Dr. Zuniga. You know that I've always been, this board has always been very caring. And when you got to go take care of your, of your family, your familia, that comes first and everything is second. And I know that, that is sometimes tough because we're in educator positions and we're always caring for others. And sometimes you need to care for yourself and then your family first. And the rest will fall into place.
Thank you. And you're absolutely right. I have every confidence in our team that when they're, when, when I'm not around and I don't see them for a couple of days, I don't worry because I know that their experience or knowledge, and many of us have been part of the district for years, that you are taking care of our kids at your school site, you are taking care of the district also in moving it forward too. of the district also in moving it forward too. So, uh, I'm very grateful for having that opportunity to not only work alongside with you, but also, uh, to meet those challenges ahead. There, there's many challenges, we heard them today. We, we understand the challenges, we know that, um, it hasn't been easy over the last couple of years at some of our schools who are facing modernization right now, but it doesn't happen every year, it happens every 30 years, as mentioned too. Uh, and, um, Dr. Lynn has been tasked to continue to work alongside his team to push on some of the projects there. So we, we feel you, we know that, we heard you as well, uh, and we will continue to fight for what we feel i- is something that's timely, but also understanding that there are a lot of obstacles to modernization, including DSA timelines, including unforeseen issues that we face when we break concrete, open walls, that the public, general public can understand. Uh, that's not an excuse for, as far as the, the timing and the year, as our students and our staff, our, our, our priority to get that school started, launched as best as we can, and provide quality, clean, efficient environments too. Uh, but we know that even with postponing summer school at Mountview High School, for example, that is going to also, uh, be faced with a lot of challenges too, as they took on a lot of projects over the summer, and we did big, a big dent, but I also know there's also problems continue, uh, on just, just the simple things from technology, from setup, uh, to inventory, uh, to making sure that, you know, all of our teachers are equipped with their, back with their resources that they had when they left. Uh, so we, we hear you loud and clear, and we'll continue to work alongside, um, our team, site administrators, along with our construction managers, uh, but rest assured that there's, there's a lot of challenges that we're not gonna back down on, we're gonna continue to be, uh, to, to be fruitful in our word that we wanna support our teams as best as we can. And I think Dr. Lynn has already taken that task by attending construction meetings, by also, um, questioning, asking questions about where we are at and the reasons why we're at. Uh, so he's also, um, quickly, uh, adapting and learning about, uh, what we're facing over the last couple of years. And I, I mentioned two schools already, but I also know that the other schools are, are continuing to also have projects. We have HVAC projects happening at, at most of our schools at this time, because we have deadlines for ESSR, as you know. Uh, come September, we must respond to the federal government about how did we utilize that funding, and our deadlines met to ensure that, you know, those construction projects were done in a not only, um, timely manner, but meets the statutory requirement for the funding given for ESSR too. And that, that's including our gymnasiums, and including our kitchens that are going through that process now. Um, the good news is that it alleviates some of the Measure HS funding that we have received, that we're gonna be targeting those, that we're supposed to target those areas to improve, utilizing ESSR funding, we're hopeful that that money could also help launch some of the other projects like Royal High School Modernization, Almonte High School Modernization as well, and also Rosebein High School Modernization too, that we're looking at. Um, everybody gets a piece of the pie, and that's one of the challenges, that we wish we can give everything to one school, but unfortunately, everybody deserved it, not only one school or the other, we all have to share that Measure HS funding that the public committed to, and not committed to, but also actually, um, made it happen, and that we actually have committed to as far as what we were gonna do for each of our high schools. That includes, um, five, five of the comprehensive high schools that need support, uh, with regard to upgrades. You may have heard, um, uh, I listen to the, the 97.1 a lot, and LA Unified has, uh, they introduced their, uh, launch for their bond in 2026. Uh, and it's, you think our bond money is, is, you know, it's a lot significant, but they're asking their large community for another bond coming up too, because of the deteriorating facilities that they're facing too. So, uh, we're, we can relate, at the same time, we worry about what we can do to support you, and we're hopeful to do that too. Uh, so I know I went off on one end there too, but again, my focus more about those things don't happen without the support of school administrators, without the support of district administration team, um, and I ask a lot of you, a, a lot of you, including being here this Saturday on your day off, to, uh, meet the needs of the district and coming together with the board and focusing on priorities, as our board president mentioned, uh, including, uh, our student voices, including our math initiative, including our, the safety through our school resource program, including attendance and what we're planning to do to continue to decrease, uh, the chronic absenteeism that we have seen after the pandemic as well. Uh, so there's a lot ahead, a work ahead. Um, I hope that you, you find some time over the next couple of days to, um, spend time with your family, re-energize, and prepare for the opening on August 19th. But the work has already started, as I saw this, I saw this week, with our, um, professional development sessions launching from Monday and Tuesday, working with all of our math teachers, all of our partner school district math teachers as well, uh, it was exciting to see, uh, and I also wanna thank, uh, someone who has coordinated that, that's Dr. McGinnis, for doing that, he's been a busy guy this week. Uh, and also, what we did today was started our district launch with professional development at Freda LaDesma School the whole entire day, uh, with over 100 educators there to invest in their preparation for the school year, that'll continue on to Friday. Um, other challenge that I've also anticipate is the federal programming monitoring that, uh, we were tasked with. Uh, typically on an FPM visit, you have one or two schools that will focus on, uh, federal programs, um, and now we're tasked with four of our five comprehensive high schools in a timely deadline by, by September to submit evidence, and by the visit that's coming over in October, to have that done completely with the actual site visits too. Um, from CT programming, uh, to our English learner population, to a- all the things that federal programs are funding and supporting, that is, um, a magnitude of tasks that we have to get through. Um, I do have to tell you that we've been very successful in all the FPMs that we've had in the past, uh, with no or very, very minimal findings, uh, compared to other, other school districts that have gone through FPM. Everybody, as soon as they know that they're gonna be visited, it, it's nerve-wracking and very stressful. Um, and leading that pack is also from the Ed Services side of the house, is Edith Chaviria, uh, the, our Director for Assessment Accountability and Parent Engagement, and she's had her handful, uh, but we're hopeful that we can support her some way or another to get us through, for the first time having four, uh, school sites visiting, uh, for federal programming monitoring in October too. Uh, so I wish everyone luck, um, we're, we'll, we'll need it, but we'll take it too, but if we stick together, we'll continue to work ahead, uh, we're gonna have a great 24-25 school year. We can't forget about the good celebrations that we have had thus far, and the many good things that Almonte High School District does produce, including our students after high school, but also what we do for our community as well. So thank you, Board President Padilla.
Thank you for your, uh, for your, uh, communication, and thank you for bringing up attendance. See, I need a little mental health help here, you know that, I, I never forget attendance, but I forgot it, so thank you for bringing that up. Um, I know that this is the, um, the very first meeting for, um, Andrea, do you have a report for us today, or will it come on the next one? Just push that button.
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, this is one, okay. Um, no, not at the moment, but I just wanna thank everyone, especially the administration and teachers that stayed behind to listen to the whole meeting, like, wow, like, I just saw everyone, like, rush out afterwards, I was like, "Oh, where'd they go?" But thank you, thank you to everyone for being here, thank you to the, to you guys, to you guys. Um, I look forward to, to working with you all this year, and yeah, I'm excited to see you guys again Saturday.
Awesome, so I'll just tell you, so they are required to be here, because it's a regular meeting, so, hey, it's okay, this is part of the training. So we agreed that they are required to be here for the regular meeting, and then if it's a, uh, if it's, uh, up to 10 o'clock, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock? 9 o'clock? Okay, I'm sorry. We agreed. There you go, no, that's great, that's great, Edith. I know that you'll be busy with the federal program monitoring, so yes, you know, no, but they're able to leave at 9, um, Andrea, and then, uh, they can go, and that's the agreement, and then for special board meetings, they do not need to come. That was the agreement, right? So I, I just need her to know, you know, from day one, so that's why, that's why they're here, okay? But no, our principals do care, but one of the things that this board, uh, or three of us wanted it to be that way, because we want them to be with us to hear the same thing. Uh, you know, we don't always agree on everything on this board, but for that specific thing, uh, Professor Estela Torres de Seigres, myself, and, uh, Mr. Qui said, yes, that we wanted them to be here, and then the other two board members didn't, didn't go for that. And so if you're on a five-member board, whatever three of us, uh, agree on, that's, that's what happens, so that's kind of the way this works. So to answer your question, but no, we, we are so excited, and I know that the principals are excited for you too, and then they welcome you with open arms, and, uh, in the next meeting, uh, we will get a report from you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, all right. So, um, moving right along, uh, we're gonna move on to consent item. Uh, can I get a motion, uh, to approve the consent agenda? This is item D, D as in David Seigres. Can I get a motion, or let me back up. Uh, Board Member Carlos Alcedo, do you have any items that you'd like to discuss on the consent agenda?
Number four.
Number four, okay, let me see this. Uh, Board Member, uh, Board Member Florencio Breones, do you have any items on the consent agenda that you'd like to discuss?
I do not.
Thank you, Board Member, Mr. Qui Nguyen.
I do not.
Thank you, Board Member, Professor Estela Torres de Seigres.
I do not.
Thank you. So, and I have none, so we'll go ahead and go to D4 for Board Member Carlos Alcedo. D4 is consider approval of amendment number one to the agreement with the Anaheim Group Incorporated, to provide division of state architects, DSA, Inspector of Records, I, OR, services for the Royal High School and Mountview High School track and field projects. Go right ahead, Board Member Alcedo.
Okay. Um, first of all, Dr. Zuniga, I apologize for missing this one yesterday on, uh, my questions, um, but I did want to ask just some clarification. Um, this, let me click back on it. Uh, Dr. Lynn, uh, the original contract, uh, for these inspectors for the Anaheim Group was 300,000, and our amendment is for 100,000. 105, to be exact, for a new total of 405. Percentage-wise, this is one of the larger, uh, change orders that I've seen, and in reading, uh, the recommendation to approve it, let me, uh, click on this. It, it seems like there were some time delays, and that was the cause for the change orders, am I correct?
Yeah, I could respond to that, and Dr. Lynn wants to chime in, I know he's learned about this project recently. Um, if you recall that, uh, we had, um, a, a, a big delay in the projects due to crate, uh, going out of business. And when you have a company that is really customized what they do, uh, that's the reason why they had to build it from scratch, they complete it, and they're contracting that. Now, because of the delay, we agreed that our, our team would conclude that our construction team would finish that, and they would, you know, finish off those crates, which we're still trying to do now, uh, but that also further delays the inspection, because they're getting a bit paid according to their contract, according to their timeline, and if that required more time, then that's, we're gonna have to implement, and it...
I just didn't see that connection here, and typically, just so that, you know, um, people join us, typically, those are questions that I would ask to get that clarification, uh, before, um, we come to the board meeting, so that I'm clear. Um, I just skipped this one, uh, yesterday in my conversations with Dr. Zuniga, but thank you for clearing that up, and now I see that connection, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, good.
Director here, come on up, uh, Director, i- if I'm not mistaken, these were the, these were the snack bars, right? It's, it's not on. The microphone, yeah, on the bottom.
Thank you, Eric. Um, good evening. Uh, they are the IOR for both the, the concession buildings and for the general project, the, um, all of the site work and the installation of the bleachers and, you know, the extensive site work that took place at both of the sites.
So these $105,000 was a change order for the whole project? It's all together?
Yeah, for both of the projects, for both Royal High School and Mountview High School. And it's important to note, when we go out and receive proposals for these, there are estimations of time, so they're not always gonna be exact. They will, uh, put together, okay, we think that the project is gonna be done in eight months, so we estimate that's gonna be so many hours, and sometimes i- it's really just an estimate.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, and, and I know they left a mess, I remember that company left a mess, because particularly, I, I can speak to the snack bars, that they, they weren't built from, uh, you know, wood or from brick and mortar, these were specialized crates made out of steel that was so specialized that when they left us and they abandoned us, we needed to figure out plan B to, to fix it all, but, okay. Thank you so much. All right, so, um, that question has, uh, been answered, there's nothing else. Can I get a motion to approve, uh, the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion on the floor by Board Member Florencio Breones to, uh, approve consent agenda, can I get a second?
A second.
I have a second by Board Member Mr. Qui Nguyen, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved for Wednesday, August 7th, 2024. Moving right along to regular agenda, item E1, E for Estela Torres de Seigres. Consider approval of change order number two with PCN3 Incorporated for the Mountview High School Zoo Crew Project, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Board Member Qui Nguyen, can I get a second? I got a second by Board Member Carlos Alcedo, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any discussion?
No.
Nope, okay. Item E2, consider approval of the notice of completion for the Mountview High School Zoo Crew Bid Number 2021-2022B6, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved to approve by Board Member Florencio Breones, can I get a second? Seconded by Board Member Carlos Alcedo, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item E3, consider approval of agreement between the Almonte Union High School District and Applied Behavioral Alternatives Incorporated to provide behavioral intervention support services to disabled students with exceptional needs for the 2024-2025 school year. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Moved to approve by Board Member Qui Nguyen, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Florencio Breones, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item four, item E4, consider approval of the agreement between the Almonte Union High School District and Vital Healthcare Incorporated to provide support services to disabled students with exceptional needs for the 2024-2025 school year. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved to approve by Board Member Florencio Breones, can I get a second?
A second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Qui Nguyen, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five, consider approval of the annual membership for Click Report for the 2024-2025 school year, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved to approve by Board Member Florencio Breones, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Carlos Alcedo, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item E6, consider approval of memorandum of understanding between the Almonte Union High School District and Day One for a youth advocacy program, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved to approve by Professor Estela Torres de Seigres, can I get a second? Can I get a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Carlos Alcedo, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item E7, consider approval of memorandum of understanding between the Almonte Union High School District and Altimat Health Services Corporation, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Moved to approve by Board Member Qui Nguyen, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Florencio Breones, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item E8, consider approval of the agreement between the Almonte Union High School District and AKA Enterprise LLC DBA Impact K9 Solutions, uh, can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Professor Estela Torres de Seigres, can I get a second?
A second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Qui Nguyen. Question, um, Dr. Zuniga, is this for, um... Can you talk a little bit about this one?
Sure.
The K9?
This is an agency that provides services for canine, for detection of contraband on campuses. Uh, we have very limited, uh, offerings from Almonte PD, I think one of their dogs is also not available at this time, uh, so this provides us more options when we are able to, um, complete those visits throughout the school year.
Absolutely, and just for the record, legally, we are able to conduct a search with the canine as long as we notify parents, how long in advance? Or maybe our legal counsel can help us out there.
Yeah, typically, our board policy allows for this practice, we are, we're required to send, uh, annual notification before it starts, so typically, it comes from my office, saying, "Hey, by the way, here's what our board policy is, we'll be visiting, uh, schools throughout the school year, please let me know if you have any questions," but I lay down the actual policy itself.
And then we determine which day that will, will happen?
Yeah, parents are informed about what dogs are responsible for, what, what, what[1756.32] Yeah, parents are informed about what dogs are responsible for, what, what, what they can and cannot do. When it comes to searches in the classrooms and outside the classroom areas.
When that happens, is it possible to get our public relations people to put out an article and put it on all of our social media platforms and let everybody know that that's happening?
We can do that.
All right.
Quick question or comment, can we also get a report at the end of the year, just to see?
Findings?
What, what happened, what findings? Just to see if this was an effective use of our money?
Sure, let me do that.
Okay, can I get a motion to, or no, I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item E nine, consider adoption.
We have one, we have one vote here.
You didn't call for any noes.
I didn't call for the vote?
For noes.
For noes, oh, I'm so sorry, okay. Do I have any nays?
Nay.
Okay. So we have a, a four, one. Motion carries. I apologize. Item nine, consider adoption of the Los Angeles County Plan for Expelled Students, can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by board member Florencio Breones, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by board member Carlos Alcedo, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item E ten, consider approval of services agreement between the El Monte Union High School District and Prime Rational Learning Incorporated to provide consulting and professional development services from Catalina Signs in the area of mathematics, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Move to approve by board member Quihwin, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Professor Estela Torres de Segres, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item E eleven, consider approval of agreement between the El Monte Union High School District and Kevin Leverin Panik. I'm an English language learner, help me out. Leverin Panic? Panish? To provide band music writing for El Monte High School Marching Band, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Move to approve by board member Florencio Breones, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by board member Carlos Alcedo, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item E twelve, consider approval to ratify agreement between the El Monte Union High School District and the United Spirit Association for Summer Cheer Camp, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Move to approve by board member Florencio Breones, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by professor, board member Professor Estela Torres de Segres, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item E thirteen, consider approval to ratify agreement between the El Monte Union High School District and Sharp International for Drill and Color Guard Camp Services at South El Monte High School, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Move to approve by board member Florencio Breones, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Professor Estela Torres de Segres, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item fourteen, E fourteen, consider approval of professional learning agreement between the El Monte Union High School District and the Orrenda Education for Professional Development Services at the Annual Board of Trustees Administrative Retreat, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Move to approve by board member Florencio Breones, can I get a second?
A second.
Seconded by board member Mr. Quihwin, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item fifteen, E fifteen, consider nominations for membership for the Los Angeles County Committee on School District Organization. Mr. Carlos Alcido, do you have any nominations?
I don't.
Hey, Mr. Florencio Breones, do you have any nominations?
I do not.
Board member Quihwin, do you have any nominations?
No.
Professor Estela Torres de Segres, do you have any nominations?
I do not.
And I have no nomination, so that answers your question, Mr., Dr. Zuniga. Not Mr. Zuniga, Dr. Zuniga. Item E sixteen, consider approval of revised certificated substitute salary schedule. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion to approve by board member Florencio Breones, can I get a second?
I'm second.
Seconded by board member Mr. Quihwin, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item E seventeen, consider approval to place classified substitutes at step one of the job class of the work they are performing, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Move, move to approve by board member Florencio Breones, can I get a, can I get a second?
A second.
Seconded by board member Mr. Quihwin, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. E eighteen, consider approval of a non-classified and underrepresented job description arts professional expert, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Move to approve by board member Florencio Breones, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Professor Estela Torres de Segres, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're moving on to item F, roundtable enclosure of this meeting. Item F one, topics, issues to be brought forward for future agenda items, board member Mr. Carlos Alcedo.
None.
Board member Mr. Florencio Breones.
None tonight, thank you.
Board member Mr. Quihwin.
Just one small thing, you know, like I say, I would like the district to update all the flow chart, you know, the organizational chart for all school because we have, you know, new personnel and also all the assistance flow chart also, but Dr. Michael Lynn did a good job. You know, she have an organization chart is very detailed and can have it from the S service and the human resource also.
Anything else, board member Quihwin?
No, that's it.
Thank you, board member Professor Estela Torres de Segres.
Yes, I, I heard that El Monte City School District has eighty schools that they have mariachi, a mariachi group. What happened when those kids that they were in the mariachi group, they come to our, our high school? They, they are not anymore in the mariachi group. Could it be possible that we can start a mariachi group in our high school?
That's part of the planning that we have had with regards to proposition. That receives funding for the art, for example.
Yes.
That every school is required to develop their plan based on interest from students, staff members, like choir teachers, you know, art teachers, or any type of visual performing arts. So that would provide some type of funding. It doesn't exclude the district from having like a club for mariachi, for example, right? That, that you can have at one school or another. It's just more about how we can invest in continuing that program onto
From the eighth grade to the ninth.
Into the high school elementary, because they are investing and if there's interest at the elementary school, we think that that would continue to have an interest at maybe one of our schools or more within one of our schools to, to have that. So we'll explore that if there's any interest as far as a plan itself or an after-school program or potentially maybe a, a class that can be created, like, you know, we have a guitar class. In the past, we've had piano class in the past, it could be a mariachi if it's formed.
That, that's something, I, I will, I will support Professor Estela Torres de Segres' question. So before we start spending the money, I, I think that's something that we need to look at because in our Friday memo, can you put the number of dollars that we're getting and then, you know, how much would it be to, to start a mariachi program?
Sure.
Also, if we could reach out to Robert Adayanes, you know, he once stood here when I, when I asked him to come and give a report on LEARN. He asked, well, how can we collaborate? This is a great example of a collaboration.
To do that is having a club for the Twenty First Century Learning Grant.
Yeah, so we could.
There's different options.
Tap into that.
Because it's really sad that they learn and they really enjoying the eighth grade, come to high school. I know the band is really good, wonderful, but it's not the same thing.
They could do both if they're, if they're basically something they can do.
It is, but I'll be blunt, you know, a lot of the times in choir, a lot of the, a lot of the songs that are sang are white songs. Nobody will say it, but I'll say it. So when you bring a mariachi, you know, eighty percent of our population here is Latino, the other twenty-some is Asian, so we need to, you know, start off with the mariachi and then we can, you know, explore and, and, and expand on something else. Because one of the things we learn, and you learned it with me too, is that part of creating unity is for people to see themselves in the programs that we offer. Or for people who sit up here, look like them, you know? All of us are Latino, he does not look like us. When Asian kids come here, they look at Mr. Qui. When Latino kids come here, they look at me. They might not say it because it might not be politically correct or they don't quite know how to say it, but we all know through the research and, you know, we've got several doctors here, master's degrees and beyond that, people will, you know, want to see their culture come alive, whether it's through the, you know, the, the dragon, the year of the dragon, the parade that we have for Asian students, whether it's the, the tamalada, whether it's the posada, whether it's, you know, the mariachi and Vicky Kar and, and, and singing. Like, we need to highlight, you know, the, the positive contributions that our culture brings because for too many years and for too long, you know, the middle-class approach in our American schools, we've always kind of, you know, looked at our English language learners coming like from a deficit model. Where it's not, you know, they're multilingual, like, I'm bilingual, not just monolingual. But when I came through the system, like, oh yeah, you're an English language learner, you come from the, the glass being, you know, half-full as opposed to, you know, the other end. And, and you know, it's, it's one of those things where you lean into this, the discomfort and you just say it. Like, our kids would like to sing some multicultural songs, not just white songs from white America. And I get it that this is America and that is what America is, you know what I mean?
You do both.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, not just both, it could be more than both.
More than both, but you could do both.
The Asian community, I mean, it could be all those things and so, you know, I'm unapologetic about that, if you're offended, so be it. Like, that's one of the things that I speak very bluntly on. In order for us to really come together and unite is that everybody needs to have a seat at the table and, and see themselves reflected in the classes that we offer and the performances that we, that we, that we bring, bring. I'm excited that we're gonna bring a black organization, and I'll say it straight out, a black organization by the name of
School Yard Rap.
School Yard Rap, you know, that they're gonna come and they're gonna unite our Latino kids and they're gonna show us like how we have so many things more in common than we do that, that, that separate us and why, why are we doing that? Again, we're doing that because of the voice of the parents in your, your organization or your
Advisory.
Committee. You, not you truth, no, we're bringing School Yard Rap. Why? Because our parents told me to my face, told him to his face, told the superintendent to his face. You know, we went through the pandemic and then you guys just started school as if nothing happened. And the parents told us, like, we lost loved ones, like, we're still hurting, we have a lot of trauma, we have a lot of stress, like, we need to do things that are outside the box, like bringing outside motivators and performers for our kids for each one of the high schools, including Fernando La Desma, and we need to do a community event. And so Dr. Zuniga and I, you know, and, and Mr. Qui and listened to the parents and Ms., Dr. Edward Zuniga is gonna bring this organization, why? Because we want our parents to know that we're listening to what they're trying, what they're telling us that they're not just gonna come to these committee meetings and then nothing, nothing's gonna get done. And, and for that, I, I do praise you and I praise this board. But again, going back to the mariachi, it is something that I will, that I will support Professor Estela Torres de Segres and we can explore it in a number of different ways, whether it's through LEARN or whether it's through, you know, one of our high schools and we can walk before we can run and exploring it as a, as a pilot at one school, but that I will accept, but just to be like, oh, you know, nobody wanted it, blah, 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 blah. I, I, I don't believe that. Sometimes you need the, the force of the board to kind of, you know, motivate a couple people, but that being said, you and I can talk about that a little more, Dr. Zuniga. In terms of me for, is there anything else, Professor Estela Torres de Segres? Okay, in terms of, of me, I don't have any items, I just wanna wish every single high school the best two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. Yes? I'm excited, thank you so much for the work you do, you know, just all this federal program monitoring that's coming your way on top of all the other things that you already have to do. Please know that it does not go unnoticed. Also know, you know, today was my first official day back at work, like, I'm in the trenches with you guys. Maybe not here in the day-to-day, but I have been, this is gonna be my thirty-first or thirty-second, you know, doing child welfare and I see those little faces and I have that anticipation and I too have that, those scary feelings like the night before where you think that you're gonna like oversleep and you're gonna miss the first day of school and all that, like, I, I'm feeling all of that, but please know that I, I wish you nothing but the best in this new academic school year. You guys are great professionals, always staying on top. And to Norma, you know what, I am very pleased, this board is very pleased with the, with the management that you have in the schools. And the reason that I say that is because in this district, we are either groundbreaking or we are ribbon cutting. And I, I would not want your job or Dr. Lynn's job because it, it is hard. And you know, we're gonna have hiccups, we're gonna have stuff and, and we can talk about that and get that fixed, but just know that I am truly grateful for the work that you and, and the, the, the business department do in this district. I will put up our schools against any schools in the San Gabriel Valley and I know that we will continue to, to get better year after year, so kudos to you publicly, okay? Yeah.
I had, I just have a couple of nonsense, just for the board.
Go right ahead, Dr. Zuniga.
Before we leave, just a, just a reminder, CSVA reservations, we have an early bird deadline Tuesday to save the district money.
I know that Mr. Qui and I gave the sheet back to Alma, Mr. Breones, did you turn yours in?
If you are planning to attend.
You what? I've already made my reservations.
Okay, perfect, did you turn yours in? Can, can you turn it in before you leave, Professor Estela Torres de Segres? Mr. Salcedo?
Talk to Alma.
Okay, all right.
Another thing also, just, we hope that you can join us on the fifteenth, next Thursday for our opening of school celebration where we welcome back our educators and celebrate them too. So that starts at seven thirty AM at Rosemead High School, you got the information, I'll provide more information on Friday.
Time does it start?
Mr. Win. Mr. Win already, I already repeat personally, but seven thirty start.
And that's on what day, Dr. Zuniga?
Thursday, September, um, August fifteenth, I'm sorry.
Yeah, cuz earlier you said the nineteen and you threw me off.
That's the opening of, that's for our schools, open for students. The fifteenth is when staff return.
Welcome back. Okay.
And I believe also, I think that was it, there's two announcements for the board, but we'll communicate it with you guys again on Friday.
Okay. All right, and at this time, I would like to invite our legal counsel attorney, Terrence Gallagher, to please report out from closed session.
Mr. President. Mr. President. With reference to the published agenda, section A two, subsections A and B, the board received information, no final action was taken. Subsection C, the board denied three claims for damages. And subsections D and E, the board received information, no final action was taken, and that concludes the readout from closed session.
Thank you very much, Attorney Terrence Gallagher. At this time, before I adjourn tonight's meeting, I will turn the board meeting over to my colleague, Mr. Board Member, Mr. Florencio Breones. Go right ahead, Board Member Florencio Breones.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla, I have two adjournments to this evening. First, I'd like to ask that we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Mariado Lotus Martinez, or Dori as she was known to many, sister of a retired El Monte Union High School District employee and my good friend Connie Caballero. Dori was born on January thirtieth, nineteen fifty-nine in Monterey Park and grew up here in El Monte on Lexington Avenue. She passed away on July twenty-seventh of this year. Dori attended Columbia Elementary School and El Monte High School where she graduated in nineteen seventy-seven. She worked for twenty-five years as an intermediate typist one with the County of Los Angeles Department of Public Social Services. She was known for her loving and giving heart. She is survived by her partner of thirty years, John McGruder and her son, Adam Cruz McGruder. Memorial services are planned for September seventh, two thousand twenty-four at one PM at Rose Hills in Whittier at the Hillside Chapel. Additionally, I ask that we adjourn tonight's meeting, board meeting, in memory of Jennifer Rose Lasur, who passed away on July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Jennifer was born on April eighth, nineteen eighty-two and grew up on Clayton Street here in El Monte. Jennifer and I met in nineteen ninety-four in Mrs. Lanier's seventh grade English class at Crans Intermediate School and our friendship continued as we transitioned to Mountain View High School. At Mountain View, Jennifer participated in numerous clubs and activities. She was a member of the Class of Two Thousand, she was a member of the Leo Club where she volunteered on various community service projects. She participated in performing arts as a member of tall flags and banners and she was a journalism student and staff writer with the Viking Scroll. In June two thousand, Jennifer earned her high school diploma and graduated from Mountain View High School. After high school, Jennifer worked as a Walmart associate for nineteen years. While working for Walmart, she met her husband Jonathan, whom she married in two thousand nine. Jennifer was an avid Marvel and Disney fan, a Pokemon Go player and a music lover, particularly the band Green Day. Jennifer will be remembered as being an amazing person with the biggest heart. Even after her passing, she continues to help others. As an organ donor, Jennifer gave three individuals extensions of their own lives and she will also help advance diabetes medical research. Jennifer was an amazing wife, a fantastic sister, a loving daughter and a wonderful friend. She is survived by her husband Jonathan Lasur, her parents Robert and Renee Kemp and her siblings Bobby, Jonathan and Sarah. Private memorial service is planned for next month. Not a day will go by where Jennifer won't be in our heart, in our thoughts or missed greatly by her Viking family. I ask that we adjourn tonight's board meeting in Jennifer's memory, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Florencio Breones, and may those two individuals rest in peace. And lastly, I, I would like to adjourn the meeting just by saying thank you to the, to Mr. Freddie Artiaga and Bernie Artiaga and the entire staff at Fernando La Desma. I am truly grateful to them and I just want them to know that they hold a very special place in my heart and that I will forever be indebted to them for, for what they did for my family, so thank you Freddie, thank you Bernie and your, your entire staff. You guys are, you guys are a gem in this district and I will never forget it till my last day on planet Earth.